Good evening and welcome to the business meeting of December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are reconvening this business meeting which started at six thirty. And then we went into an executive session for four matters of the employment history of four particular persons. And now we're back. We're going to start with the pledge led by Mrs. Galelo's fourth grade class. Fourth graders take a while to get organized.
Hi, five is bad.
Buffering. Dan will now lead us in the push.
They just did such a great job.
Well, the video buffered.
Now you have to start it to begin.
All right, on the fly, ladies, on three. Ready? One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Nicely done. We'll get Mrs. Galelo's class in January, next year. Okay, I'm going to move the agenda around a little bit. We're going to start with recognitions and presentations. So, Dr. Luft, we're going to start with the recognition of the Putnam Valley High School, two thousand and twenty-three New York State Championship Cheerleaders.
Yes, we are. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It's very exciting to have a full house here this evening to recognize some very special people. All right, so I will ask Ms. Kelly Wilson and Ms. Nicole D. Donald come up and join me. So I do want to recognize the hard work of some tremendous athletes in what was the first inaugural game day state championship. In Putnam Valley, while we don't win a lot of state championships, we certainly like to recognize those who do. And we are the third stop on the victory tour, I believe. I know they've already been recognized by the town and the county. And it's my belief they are now expected to go up to Albany to be recognized at some point. So a huge congratulations, and I'm happy that everyone is rallying around these fantastic athletes to recognize a huge accomplishment. I know many of them will be continuing for multiple seasons. I know many will be participating in national championships. So not that you guys set the expectations too high, but don't come back without the gold. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to your coaches. We're going to invite, call your name, come up, make sure you stand to be recognized. Mr. Denike will take probably forty-seven pictures of you. And then stay up here when everyone's done. We'll take one big picture with everyone. Sound good? All right, turn it over.
You can pull it down.
We just want to say thank you for everyone for supporting us and recognizing us, especially the fire department. You guys are also here tonight. You definitely helped celebrate us a lot, too, with the send-off and our coming home ceremony. That was a lot of fun. So thank you. I also just want to point out, like, this team did a really amazing job this year, and it is a very young team. There are no seniors on this team. So a lot of these girls will, obviously, all of them will be on the team again come the fall. So it's very exciting. Okay. Maria Ardrue. Kylie Boe. Gabriella Branduzzi. Eliana Broccolo. Grace Cruz. Cameron Delmater. Kaitlin Egan. Victoria Galazzo.
Another walk feels much longer.
Alyssa Grippo. Ava Jacobson. Mia Maroulis. Ciara Maroulis. Maddie Monier. Gabriella Portino. Ava Petrillo. Riley Sampaña. Angelina Frimo. And Savannah Simmons. The captain, just, our captain, Cameron Delmater, just wants to say something.
I just wanted to thank you guys for recognizing us and thank you to our coaches and our team. We worked, like, really, really hard to get this, and we got it. So just thank you.
Tall in the back, short in the front.
They might as well do it.
She can't resist.
You guys are going to need to start assembling trophy cases at home. Hold all your awards. All right. So the second group we wanted to recognize this evening is really a culmination of work that they've provided to this community for many, many years. And it's certainly not attributed to a single instance or a single case, but really many, many years of service to our community and to our school district. I don't know of any other town that has a volunteer fire department that is willing to do what ours is willing to do on behalf of our students. Escorting every, every team or academic winner out of town for state championships, national tournaments. I remember escorting a student out to go do a science research presentation out in California with every fire truck we have. They sometimes let me ride in it, which is cool. But it's not just that. They come to our elementary school and they lead our fire prevention week. They're advocate, sorry, they participate in all of our first responder appreciation events. They have their color guard there during the football game. They have all their apparatus out for the middle school, high school. They serve our camps over the summer spraying water. They are in constant contact. J.D. took me for a ride the other day during one of our torrential downpours because if it rains here, it's now a flood. So just being able to access the roads to make sure that we could safely get our buses back home. And that's just a few of the many, many ways the members of our volunteer fire department volunteer their time, right? And this is beyond what they're, what they signed up for, which is keeping our community safe and putting their lives at risk to do so. But this is above and beyond and going the extra mile for the students here in Putnam Valley. So I want to read what the plaque is, and then I'll invite those members that are here this evening up. It reads, "The Putnam Valley Central School District proudly presents Pride in Putnam Valley to the Putnam Valley Volunteer Fire Department. We're grateful and deeply appreciate the time the members of the PVVFD spend away from their families and the personal risk they take to protect the Putnam Valley community. We wish to also extend our gratitude to all the department does for the district's students. The department members consistently go above and beyond for the Putnam Valley Central School District students by giving up more of their limited free time to provide their knowledge, experience, and resources. As community volunteers, you are members, you are mentors to our children and everyday heroes to our community." So congratulations. Please come on up. Let's see, if anybody's not looking to hang out for us at the meeting, now would be a great time to skedaddle. Thank you all for coming. Have a wonderful night. You are, of course, welcome to stay. Nobody has to leave. There you go. Have a seat. Right up front.
Maybe next time we'll hold them till the end so that they'll stay the whole meeting.
All right, restless. My end of the meeting.
Hey, Mark's leaving. Oh, okay. All right, I'm going to open up for the public to speak on any listed agenda items. And so it doesn't seem to be anybody to speak. He doesn't look ready to speak. We won't put him on the spot. We're going to move into the end of our presentations, which is the second reading of the policy series two thousand, School Board Governance and Operations, and series three thousand, Administration.
So these policies have already gone before the board-appointed policy committee. They've been vetted through the New York State School Board Association. Their recommendations were presented to the committee. The committee either adopted or rejected those recommendations. It's already been before the community for a first reading, and now this is the second reading. I did have a community mention, member reach out to me regarding one specific language. I don't think we have to change the language, but maybe I want to just publicly state. It had to do with board members attending or being present in the school building. The intention of the policy is certainly that I be aware if that is happening during the school day, during the instructional day. But certainly, board members as community members are free to access the building anytime outside of the instructional day, just as any community member would be able to with some legitimate reason to be here. So whether it be attending a concert, or a sporting event, or a parent-teacher conference, anytime the community is welcome in our buildings, our, our board members as community members would be welcome as well. So I just want to clarify that publicly. But as we do invite our board members in throughout the school year, during the school day, that's always something that's facilitated between the superintendent's office and the board members. And we meet them here and just make sure that we're all on the same page. So I just wanted to clarify that one piece.
Yeah, I got the same email, and I was gonna, I just would reiterate, we've never had a problem. Our board members are respectful of the administration in the buildings and in, in the superintendency. So they have always kept him in the loop, but it's, it's good to have it as policy to remind people that that's the appropriate way to handle it. So, anyway. Okay, any other comments about the series two or three thousand? Now, Sam, you?
Just, Maureen, do we have an update on when the next set of policy?
We do, Sam, but it will not be till the end of January, as we told us.
That late, huh?
Yeah.
I'd love to have this wrapped up by the end of the year.
It's still the hope. We hope we get multiple in the end of January.
That would be good.
Rather than one at a time.
Fingers crossed.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Number one, please.
Okay, resolved to approve the consent agenda, items two through nine, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Bellino?
The agenda includes approval of the previous meeting's minutes, approval of an update to the substitute listing, CSE/CPSC placements, additional work hours for staff members, a budget adjustment, approval of special education programs, approval of an unpaid leave of absence, and a donation of a baritone music instrument by the McCarty family to the music department in the district.
Any other questions or comments? I do appreciate when I see somebody who has an instrument and nobody left at home to play that instrument, that they make a donation to the school because it allows maybe a child who can't afford to rent an instrument, or somebody who has a large instrument like a tuba and doesn't have to bring it on the bus, or have mom have to drive them. So we appreciate this donation, and we're always welcoming donations of musical instruments. And I don't think pianos, but other musical instruments.
We're in the market for a grand piano, if anybody has one. I'm serious.
I have one, but I'm not giving it up.
You don't, the one out here is not tunable, or?
It's getting there.
It's getting there. All right, well, if anybody's cleaning house and wants to get rid of one, then we could provide a loving home. Okay, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolutions pass. Okay, reports. Student representatives. It's been a long time since we were here together.
It has. But at the same time, I feel like I don't really have much to talk about because, like, everything I said at the last meeting, it's like, I could just say it again. But, okay, so first up, Eduardo Rosinos winning the Heart of a Giant Award. That's incredible.
And he'll be recognized by our board, right, in January, I think? Dr. Luft?
Yep.
Good.
Great. Yeah, that's incredible. And everyone in the school is just extremely proud, and it's really, truly inspiring. And it's really cool to see our school name, like, on the news. So next week in the high school, we have a holiday spirit week, which is always fun. Upcoming auditions for the Spring Musical, January fourth, which is our next board meeting. So that's, that's random. I don't know why I said that. So last week, we had our Garrison students shadowing some of our big buddies. So they went along in some senior classes. So they got to see, like, IB classes and, and to see how it worked. And it was really, I was, I had someone shadow me, and it was, it was really interesting to see, like, to hear feedback from the kids and, like, hear what their other school was like. They said, like, the teachers are very friendly. So that's very good compared to, I think they said, like, the teachers in their school are, like, a little stricter. And, yeah, so we did get good feedback from that. We have National English Honor Society pajama and toy drive. So that's accepting donations, new donations, so new pajamas and new books until December twenty-first, to be donated to the food pantry. And then National Honor Society also has a toy drive and a coat drive, which have been very successful. I'm sure you've heard the Connect Eds. And we also deserted winter sports. It's not really much.
Good.
Excellent. I will say that it was after the board meeting that you had your gratitude festival?
Yes.
You did a really nice job hosting.
Thank you. Did you guys leave before it was over?
I did. My husband was having a medical issue, and I had to rush home. But, but the music stayed with me. And it's uplifting. It was just really beautifully done.
It's always amazing experience, and you just leave, like, feeling so much better and so much better about, like, the community, especially in music here. So it was a very good opportunity for everyone, and it ended on a really good note with some alumni. And yeah, it's always good. It's a good time of year to have that happen, and I'll definitely be coming back next year.
And the drives that you're having, I mean, it really does a lot of outreach to the community, you know, between the toys and the coats and the pajamas. And if anybody is running by a store and picks up an extra set, you can drop it off at the high school, and they'll put it in the boxes for you. And so, yeah, it's a really, it's a really great thing that, that, that they're doing. Okay, thank you. Care, Kay, anything? No? Nothing to add? Okay. Dr. Luft, your report.
I mean, it's bad enough that they steal my content, but you just picked off the first three things on my list. So I'm going to do my best not to talk too much about this because, as Sam had mentioned, we are getting invited, Eduardo and his family here for a meeting in January to be recognized. We want to show some of the videos, both the national clips as well as the nomination video. I know that Sierra Gabriel was instrumental in the creation of that, as well as participating as a member of the media when we went down the visit. So we'll have an opportunity to do all that. But I do want to recognize that it was one of the most special days I've had here in Putnam Valley, and that's over the last seven years, having the ability to witness it firsthand. It was, all of it was a surprise to Eduardo. I think even after it was unveiled, it was still a surprise to Eduardo for a little while to comprehend exactly what was going on. But again, I'll get in all the details, but it was really, there was not a dry eye in the place. And when I say there was probably, in the videos you see online, you see the team and the coaches and representatives from the Giants and Hospital for Special Surgery. But what you don't see is, like, thirty-five members of local and national media, as well as Sierra Gabriel on the media side. But the cameras and the mics and the lights and all of that stuff that's behind the camera, the amount of attention that this drew was, was something really that you had to see and be able to experience. And just hearing Dr. Taylor talk about Eduardo and the adversities he's been through and how he's overcome that, he just looked around the room, and there was tears everywhere. I mean, I know our tough football players will never admit to it, but there was definitely some tears there, too. But it's a very special day. I couldn't be more happy for Eduardo, and we'll certainly talk more about this when Eduardo's here to be recognized. But a very special day for Putnam Valley. And again, positive press is always good.
Well, and can I just, like, you use the word inspiring, and, and it is, and it's wonderful for him. But I see so many students that are motivated and inspired by him and by others. So it's not like a one-off. It's not like he's the only student in Putnam Valley, which doesn't take anything away from him. But I just want to say, we have a lot of students that go above and beyond every day. So, okay, go ahead.
So my second item was the gratitude festival. As a parent of a twelve and a fifteen-year-old boy, it's often hard to get them to come to work with me. But I have to say, my younger son asks for, when is the gratitude festival? I think he's been here with me every year since, since I've been back in Putnam Valley. So we actually went to, I think he was at the last one that was at the Cultural Center. So it's, it's certainly evolved, and it's one of my favorite times of the entire year. I love seeing the alumni come back and present, to perform, as well as students who are maybe not the students you see in the plays or the dramas or on the stage for concerts. And I'll never forget, a couple of years ago, there was a student who was a little apprehensive about getting up there, and she had never really sung before people, in front of people before, but spent a lot of time during COVID at home. You probably already know who I'm talking about, but I won't, I won't embarrass her. Learning to play the guitar and singing and writing music. And I think there was one failed attempt, and then she finally got back up there and started singing, and the whole room just went silent. Like, oh, my God. She was being recruited by the end of it to be in the next musical or the, but it has that kind of power. And it's just really one of the happiest feelings throughout the whole school year to have the students. And I do want to recognize that Reese was the emcee for the event, and really, I'm sure, did a tremendous amount of planning and coordination. So kudos to you for making that all possible.
Thank you.
As we had mentioned, during the holiday season, our schools do a tremendous amount for our community through food drives, pajama drives, coat drives, toy drives, as well as a partnership with United for the Troops. So I do want to compliment all of those who helped arrange, participate, distribute, and certainly those who delivered gifts or toiletries for the troops during that time. We did just recognize the high school cheerleaders for their championship. I failed to recognize that they actually went to the elementary school, were treated like celebrities. They got to parade through the building. They had to do, they got to do a performance in front of six hundred elementary school students. They also probably didn't want to admit it, but they were, there were tears in their eyes as they were going around, and having six hundred students all fighting to, to give them high fives. And it was a really special moment, and I think they really enjoyed having the opportunity to perform. I know they also did something here at the high school, as well as having an opportunity to go through the middle school. Our world language had their honor society induction. We had a parent learning series working with anxiety, and that was led by our own Dr. Messera. We had an IB information evening. Mr. Vindigorio is always the star of the show. He was actually very impressive. We had, there was more parents here from Garrison than there was Putnam Valley parents. It just shows the level of interest that is building of Garrison parents considering sending their children here to Putnam Valley. As we had mentioned, we had our Garrison students here for the day, giving tours, and then we had the parents back that night, led by our own big buddies, who always are, again, the stars of the show. Last year, I witnessed someone try to tip one of the students. I didn't, I didn't see that this year, but they may have just been more discreet about it. I politely said the students are not allowed to accept tips for their tours. But we thought one tour group got lost, but there was just a very detailed tour they were on. So the parents have nothing but positive things to say about the presentation, and especially the advice and words and wisdom that was given to them by our own high school seniors that let them around the buildings. I know for a fact that Garrison had a board meeting that evening. Several of those in attendance here left here and went to the board meeting. And then Putnam Valley instantly became a topic of conversation during their public board meeting, where members, the community members who were here wanted to stand up and speak about what they had seen and how impressed they were. I do know that we had ten students from Garrison return to shadow Putnam Valley students throughout the day. That's a tremendous number in what I believe is a class of about eighteen students. I think that's fifty, just under fifty percent of the students. I made up eighteen, but I think that's about what they have in the class. And I think it's something that's going to continue to grow. I think as more Garrison students come to Putnam Valley, then they'll have siblings, they'll have friends, they'll have neighbors that will consider coming to Putnam Valley as well. I do want to just clarify, I've heard a rumor recently that the- that the, these students attending Putnam Valley somehow fell on the backs of taxpayers here in, in Putnam Valley. I just want to assure everyone, um, that this is actually a revenue, uh, generator for the school district. Garrison pays tuition for every one of those students, um, to come to Putnam Valley. So we take in revenue and the secret here is our expenses are exactly the same.
Right.
There's not enough of them where we have to hire more teachers or, or buy more furniture or expand our buildings, right? Our teachers are here, our classrooms are here. There's empty seats in some of those classrooms and we would love for more Garrison students to take advantage of this opportunity and to fill some of those empty seats because it, it does nothing more than create a more diverse learning environment here in Putnam Valley and, um, generate revenue for our school district. So it's a, it's a totally a positive experience for us here in Putnam Valley. As we had mentioned, winter sports have begun as well as the concert chorus and band series, season. So fifth and sixth grade chorus was two days ago, seventh and eighth grade chorus was last evening and the band concerts begin Tuesday and Wednesday next week for our middle school. So if you weren't able to get out for the chorus concerts this week, I would encourage everyone to get out for a band concert next week. And as we'll hear right when we get back from break, budget season has already begun. Uh, Jill and I have already started meeting with departments and building principals going over next year's the 24, 25 budget, which sounds weird to even say. Um, but that's the season we're in. And I do want to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah. For those who are celebrating, that ends Friday, this Friday, December 15th. Merry Christmas for those who celebrate. Happy Kwanzaa, December 26th to January 1st, and obviously a happy new year to all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we're going to move into new business. Uh, item number one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Luciano Giannelli be granted 10 years as a teaching assistant in the Putnam Valley Central School District effective January 4th, 2024.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved to authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into an interim contract with Jill Figarella and appoint her as interim school business official effective December 4th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024 unless extended or terminated in accordance with the agreement referenced as doc number 104 dash 24 according to the agenda and the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I do want to point out that the new business official looks eerily like the last business official, maybe a slightly different haircut. Um, but Ms. Figarella did tell me that she thoroughly enjoyed her retirement. Uh, traveled the world, wrote a memoir, memoir, um, during that one day that she was retired for. So we're thankful for Jill, uh, agreeing to return and to, um, continue to lead our business department through the remainder of the school year. And as a district, we anticipate posting a vacancy for a full-time replacement, uh, right after we get back in January and start that process to replace what is a, a very, very difficult job to replace. So that's a little bit of our timeline. So thank you, Jill, and welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be back.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Yarrow Castillo to a probationary appointment as bus driver effective December 29th of 2023 with a probationary period of 52 weeks from December 28th of 2024 in the transportation department on step 10 of the CSEA schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to, you'll notice a theme coming up for the next several. Uh, the district has been successful in hiring some new bus drivers. It's been something that we've pleaded with the community for, for many years. So we've gained some traction. I believe this is for this month. We have another two that have expressed interest. Um, one thing that we are desperately in need of for anyone out there who may be interested is bus monitors. Um, as we start to take back bus routes, many of those routes require a monitor. So the district is unable to take the route back from our vendor unless we have a monitor to also be on that bus. So it's, uh, some early morning hours, some afternoon hours, uh, perfect for anyone who may work in the middle of the day, especially our lunch monitors or people who work for our food service providers. Fits perfectly right into their schedule. Mark, hey, if you're interested, monitoring a bus will get you someone nice.
Bring the guitar.
But we're going to start doing some a little more PR about it and really looking to incentivize, uh, some community members. It's a great gig in retirement and, uh, hopefully as we, if we can start hiring some monitors, then we'll continue our, with our trend of hiring more bus drivers, which, uh, has a direct savings for our taxpaying community.
Um, the 52 weeks, so they work through the summer, correct?
Bus drivers are 184-day employees. So they work, uh, like a teacher. They're just during a school year. Some, some do take extra hours over the summer, support our ESY program. Some actually drive for the town camp. Uh, but that's, that's contracted through the town, not the school district. Uh, but yeah, there's, for the most part, their, their regular contractual year is 184 days. So just the school year.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Louis Gonzalez to a probationary appointment as a bus driver effective December 29th, 2023 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, December 28th, 2024 at the transportation department on step, step 10 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Dana Cancel to a probationary appointment as a bus driver effective December 29th, 2023 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, December 28th, 2024 at the transportation department on step nine of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. And congratulations, Dr. Luft. I know this was a goal of yours, so this is a good thing. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an agreement between the district and Jill Figarella regarding tuition reimbursement as per document number 105 dash 24 attached to the agenda and the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby creates the following non-instructional position effective December 1st of 2023, a 12-month building and grounds maintenance supervisor in the competitive class of civil service. Therefore, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education ratifies the addition of this newly created position in the CSEA bargaining unit and the corresponding salary schedule, document 103 slash 24, and appropriates the funds for such a position.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This, this is a long time happening and it should have happened years ago. I'm very pleased to see this, this occur. This is a, a, a much needed position. Um, really, truly. Uh, thank you, Dr. Luft.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Brian Mansfield to a probationary appointment, a building and grounds maintenance supervisor effective December 1st, 2023 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, November 30th, 2024 at the operations department on step 11 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to clarify that Mr. Mansfield, while assuming new responsibilities as part of this position, will also be maintaining his current responsibilities. So it's not an additional position, it's a reclassification of an existing position. So we're not adding staff, we're just, uh, creating a new position for an existing staff member.
I have a comment about Brian. I've known Brian as a student. I had him back in the 90s in Walter Panis High School. He was a good guy then and he's a good guy now. And congratulations, Brian.
Yeah, truly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number nine, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Kevin Maffetone to a probationary appointment of custodial worker effective December 18th, 2023 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, December 17th, 2024 at the operations department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So similar to the last position, uh, Kevin will be assuming a new position while maintaining some of his previous responsibilities. Uh, the new position includes some more technical, higher order work, uh, that we don't currently have someone, uh, able to do here within the middle school, high school campus in the evening. Uh, so Kevin will be able to fulfill that need while still continuing, uh, his current services. So again, new title, not a, not an additional position.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 10, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the bid by Lumer Plumbing, the sole bidder for bid number 2023 dash 24 dash 03, ultraviolet light water purification system and water softener system as per document number 97 dash 24 attached to the agenda and the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 11, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the 2024-25 school year budget calendar timeline as per document 102 slash 24 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? Is it going on the website as soon as, after we approve it tonight? It's, uh, yes?
Yes. I do want to point out that our first meeting in January, we will likely be discussing the 24, 25 school year calendar.
I know when I first saw that, I was all I thought, I said, oh, budget calendar. Okay.
We're almost there.
Almost there. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 12, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve retiring policy series 2000 board operational responsibilities and policy series 3000 administration currently in effect for the district and approve the second reading of revisions and updates to policy series 2000 board operational responsibilities as per document number 100 dash 24 and policy series 3000 administration as per document number 101 dash 24, documents attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. And thank you, Sam and Helen, for your work on this as well as the administrative team. Um, we really, we, no, this has been in the works, but I'm glad we're finally getting it done.
Getting it done, yeah.
I was going to say the same. Thanks for taking one for the team.
You have a lot of fun at those meetings.
We do.
Need a lot of coffee.
Fun? Is this in quote? Can we?
Oh, it's good. It's good.
Um, all right. Public comment on any topic? Okay.
Oh, good. Mark?
I want you to go home later.
I'd like to remind you you have a three-minute time limit.
I promise. No, I just, I just realized, I represent everyone here. You know that, right? And I'm Mark Weiss and I'm the president of the Tompkins Corners Cultural Center on Peak Skilhalla Road. And I don't usually get up in that capacity and I'm a cheerleader for public education in our schools and, uh, so I, but I, I just thought I'd make this connection. I was at the gratitude festival, uh, this, with the recent one. It was, it used to be, we, we got too small for it. It's great. It's unbelievable. Um, uh, and I felt so exhilarated by being there. Uh, and I, and, uh, previously we, we've made connections in a number of ways. We, the literary magazine, uh, had a retreat at our place and after the retreat was over, the cover of the magazine had our stained glass windows as the cover of the magazine.
Nice.
Uh, so I just want to tell you how I, wonderful I feel that we, wonderful, that's the word I'm going to get to in a second, uh, how wonderful it is that we work together and that we're, we're a community as powerful as we are. Uh, this Saturday, we're, uh, having a radio play at Tompkins. I thought I'd mention it. It's a Wonderful Life. It'll be an hour long at 2 o'clock and at 3 o'clock, we're having a party and whoever's there, join the party. So you're all welcome to come.
Who's doing, who's doing the play?
Uh, it's, it's a, a group that Judy Allen is the director of radio, uh, reading a radio script of this movie, that wonderful movie that you're going to see 12 times this year next month. Uh, It's a Wonderful Life. So it's local actors and
Nice.
folks who do that.
Nice. And say the time, a date and time again?
Okay. Saturday, 2 o'clock, uh, Cultural Center on Peak Skilhalla Road.
Sounds good. Thanks so much. Okay. Topics for upcoming meetings.
So our first meeting in January will be our long-range fiscal plan. And then the second meeting in January will be the start of our budget presentations, starting with our instructional budget. So that'll be facilitated by Ms. Levine, uh, along with the help of our building principals. That's the kickoff to the budget season for you guys. Get ready. Bring your calculators.
Well, I'm glad we're doing curriculum and instruction first. That's a good thing.
That will be done the same way as it was last year, all grouped together, right?
Yep.
Great. Good. Excellent.
Okay. Um, board member comments?
Uh, from previous meetings, just two items. The first one, uh, 6 o'clock start. I know, Barbara, you were going to investigate that. Is it possible to do that or it is not?
Okay. So I wrote down, so.
Because if it's not possible, I understand.
Right. I, I realized after our last meeting, we had talked to the students, we talked to the people on the board, but that I had left out, um, others who might be affected. The, the high school clubs, sports, custodians, um, other people who use the building, the, the people who have to set up for the meetings. Um, I hadn't asked them how it would work for them. So I did reach out to all of them and I got, I, I will say, what I got was what I expect of Putnam Valley people. Whatever, whatever you need, we'll make it work. You know, which is, I, you know, it sounds funny, but it, it's the way we function.
I understand.
If somebody needs something, everybody's willing to step in and try to make it work. However, um, it, it definitely had an impact on the high school, changing the start time. Um, it, it did affect other groups. Um, so my recommendation would be to just leave it, go back to leaving it. Just because, I mean, we can talk about it another time, but for this year, things are in motion, things are set, people have their assignments, clubs and sports are assigned here. Um, custodians know when they have to clean so that they could get out and let Dan and Maureen set up for the meeting and whatever.
That's, that's a good compromise. If we can consider this, uh, over the summer, uh, to plan it for next year, that, that would be fine. Thank you. The, the second thing, uh, our protocols. I, I agree with all of them except item, I believe it is number six. And, and you all received an email from me. My concern is that you never know what the tenor of a school board is going to be.
Do you, please, here.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Uh, I want to just pass them down that way.
Number six.
This one?
Here, pass this down to the students so they know what we're drawing him out.
There you go.
Um, these are, these, just, just so, these are protocols, not policies.
Right.
So they're, they don't need to be voted on. They're, it's the, it's sort of like our operating procedures.
Exactly.
Correct?
Right. Correct. I, I understand it. Uh, my concern is that final sentence, uh, of the, uh, article six, you know, that says, um, uh, board decisions are binding on all board members and members will support, not undermine, all decisions reached by the board. We never know what the tenor of, of the board will be. Members change. We know that. So my fear is this, we have a board that is very austere. They want to cut and cut. And they put out a, you know, a resolution that would eliminate all courses that are not funded by the state of New York. And that has happened in other areas. I would be totally against that. And yet our policy says that you can't undermine that and you must support it. I would be totally against that. And yet, our policy says that you can't undermine that, and you must support it. I would rather see that policy state something like, "All majority-voted board decisions are binding on all board members." I agree with that. "Those board members that disagree or have concerns with the decisions can voice their opinion at an open board meeting in an unfretted and yet respectful manner unless the decision concerns an issue that has been vetted in executive session. Once discussion has ceased and the majority vote prevails, no board member will undermine the decisions." In other words, the way policy six reads now, you have a protocol that would silence anybody who's in bold disagreement with a resolution or with a proposal.
So, so the way the policy, the protocol reads now is just the black words? Just the words in black. It just said, "Board decisions are binding on all board members, and members will support, not undermine, all decisions reached by the board." Is that, is that correct?
That's, that's what bothers me. Right.
Okay, so you, the words in red are, were added by who?
Sam.
Those are mine. That's what I...
That's your suggestion?
Yes, that is my suggestion.
Plus the, unless the decision concerns an issue that's been vetted by an executive session?
Exactly. Yes, that's mine also.
Okay.
So you see, that allows a board member who has grave disagreement to be able to speak their mind publicly. And then, once the vote is done, it's done, and the discussion ceases. But you have to allow that freedom of speech. And right now, without the red writing, you, you, you don't have that ability.
Well...
No, you have to support it.
No, but, but we never, we never make a decision without asking for questions or comments.
But again, it states...
But I don't object, I don't object to clarifying that and saying that there will be discussions. But...
You need to get rid of, and I'm very serious about this, "Members will support." No, you don't have to support a policy. You can totally disagree with it, but you will not undermine it. In other words, this could limit an individual board member from stating what they believe. You have to support. Now, I'm not gonna support somebody who wants to cut a program. I'm not gonna support somebody who wants to remove books out of the library. I'm not gonna do those things. So consensus, be damned. You have to allow freedom of speech. And I'm very strong on that. You gotta get the thing of support out of there. We have to be able to express our dismay or disagreement with a policy. You don't undermine it, but certainly you have to allow non-support of an issue.
But I don't think...
And there's gonna be times that non-support occurs.
I don't think any of us on this board would support cutting anything that he's talking about.
But you don't know what the board will be in three, four, five years. And this, this is a protocol that covers this all.
No. I don't have a problem with freedom of speech, but if you're gonna be a board member, it does have to be majority rules. And I get that, but I get what you're saying, too, and I'm in agreement. You can voice your opinion and your decisions, but the bottom line is majority rules.
Right. And I said that. It doesn't mean I have to support it. I simply will not undermine it. In other words, I won't go to the public and say, "Listen, do this, do that, you gotta overturn," as some other individuals on various boards have done. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, I want the ability, without being censored, to say, "This is a stupid idea. What is wrong with you people?"
So can, can I suggest, I have a much better understanding as to where Sam's going or what Sam's concern is. It's hard to say, say what you want during the comment, but then have the protocol also say that you have to support it.
Right.
Makes it sound like, well, you can only say something if you support it. What I would suggest is, we have a board committee that was tasked with this, right? So Crystal, myself, and Jeanette met and went through these revisions. So why don't we go back, is there, there's no questions other than this specific protocol?
That's the only one I have.
So what I'll do is I'll grab, we probably don't even need to meet in person. I'll grab this and throw it on a Google Doc, and then we can sort of collectively draft some language that we think honors what the intention of this is, without undermining the notion that during that comment period, if you don't agree, that's your opportunity to say you don't agree. And I'm sure we could find a way or language that accomplishes both of those things simultaneously.
See, that's my great fear, because censoring action can take place when you violate a protocol. And it says here, "You must support it." So if I come out against something, you can censor me and actually remove me from the board, as has been done in our neighboring district in Cornwall. You know, those things are frightening for anybody who's...
I think what we're running into is the collision of freedom of speech prior to the vote and the expectation that following the vote, everybody supports the decision of the whole...
You cannot undermine it. But you don't have to support it. In other words, I will vote no on something.
Right, absolutely.
Right.
So I think that's, that's the clarification we need to make, right? There is, there's actions that can precede the vote, and then there's actions that follow the vote. And those maybe have to be broken up into two different bullets. Because you're right, you can make a comment why you think this is a terrible idea, you could vote against it, but the expectation is still, if it passes...
You don't undermine it.
That you get, you go get behind it.
Right.
I could follow what you're saying.
Take this one, because it has the other piece that he wanted.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's an important piece, too.
I want to just say publicly that when we went through that particular bullet, I think the spirit of what was there was exactly what you are trying to make it say. So I think the way that we read it was not that board members, I mean, I'm an extremely vocal person. I would never want to not be able to speak my mind on an issue. I think that's the reason why we have these seats, right? We represent a community so that we can come together, make decisions in the best interest of our children. And so I think that when we read the, the language that, that we had chosen at the time, that it had the spirit of what you're trying to get it to say, this is more specific, and I don't disagree that it should be more specific.
Yeah.
Because, you know, vagueness can cause some ambiguity.
When you say "will support," that means you gotta support it. And if you don't wish to, again, a censoring, censoring motion can be made. I've been in government a long time, and I always look at areas where, you know, individuals, their freedom of speech can be, you know, compromised, and that "will support" can do that.
Okay.
I think we're good, good plan.
Okay, that's it. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and everything else to everybody.
Crystal?
Yes, I had the pleasure of attending our middle school steering committee meeting last week. And it was very well-run by both the principal and the assistant principal. And we had three different tasks that we kind of jigsawed, and we split up to achieve them. One was regarding policy for the I B program in the middle years program. We specifically looked at the I B academic integrity policy and the I B inclusion policy. And I had the privilege of working on that task, and it was good, because we looked at some of the language in the high school policies that they have for the I B program, and we shifted some language to make it more age-appropriate for middle school students. And so I, I thought that that was a really great activity. The other two subcommittees worked on field trips and events.
Field trips and...
And events, school events, yeah.
So how often do they meet?
It's like three times a year. So we tried to cram in a lot of work into that one session, and we, I think we even went a few minutes over.
So do we have any parents on the high school building steering?
There's parents on all three building steering committees. Don't ask me to quote who they are, but I do know there's parents on all three building steering committees. In fact, some parents sit on multiple. Like one of our board members.
Planning on sitting on more than that. Okay, Sam and I both attended the Communities That Care meeting last week?
Yeah, last week.
I'm always amazed when they tell you how, how much medicine and sharps are collected on Medicine Takeback Day. I'm just always amazed. But it's, it's a great thing that they do. They do a lot of really good work. It was really nice to see both our high school S R O and middle school people there. You know, they, because they had, it's good that they're there to hear what's going on and, and know kind of the programs and stuff that are available for kids. So, do you have any, anything else that we can, that you can think of that?
I, I personally...
A lot of really good programs.
Yeah, no, the Community That Cares is an awesome group sponsored by Putnam County that concerns abuse of substances and a myriad of issues. I would like to see more attendance, perhaps. Maybe some of our A Ps, if possible, Dr. Luft, at those meetings. We meet three, four times a year, that's it. But what they talk about is very relevant, especially in the realm of right choices and wrong choices, which your A Ps traditionally, assistant principals traditionally handle. So it would be good if we could have their feedback, you know?
Well, and presentations and programs that are available, some of them free.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, somebody might say, "Oh, that'd be great in our, in our school," or whatever.
And Jeannie's always there, you know, thank God.
She is, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Say it. She wants you to... For the audience. Okay.
Who's, who's anyone?
If anyone's interested in joining the committee, please contact J. Denike.
Oh, there you go.
J. D. N. I. K. E. I can't spell this name, at P V C S D dot org.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're always looking for...
I would have misspelled the last name.
Yeah, we're always looking for interested community members. It's a great combination of people.
It is.
We've lost some, some community members, but, but it's a great, it's a great group, so, and they work really hard.
Thank you, Barbara.
The other thing is, I think Monday, you should be getting things from West Putt about the, the beginning of our advocacy work, the new advocacy agenda, and we're meeting with our state representatives virtually. I think it's Monday. Look back on my calendar. But it's, it's really, you know, it's really interesting stuff, and, and, you know, we're advocating for what's best for kids across the state, so it's always good to stay connected.
We've also had, Jackie, please correct me or help me here. We've also had a couple newsletters go out recently to the district and to the communities. So again, just encourage everyone to check your emails, read what's going on at the schools and be informed.
I'm always amazed at what teachers are taking and learning about and, and all the things that are going on. So, yeah, it's a good, Jackie does a nice job. Okay, anything else? Helen?
I just want to say that I couldn't do the newsletter without Jeannie. She is a huge support in that. So that community newsletter that goes out every month is a, it's a labor of love between the two of us.
It's always nice when somebody has your back. No, Helen, nothing exciting, new and exciting? You're not doing anything new and exciting?
Lots of things.
Anyway, okay.
Just to call out also to the National Language Honor Society that occurred recently, and it was a great ceremony, but the Mandarin piece of it was the first time those students were recognized as part of the honor society. So that was great to see.
Yes, and our two board members here participated in that ceremony. Actually, all three of them did. We're missing one tonight, but all three did. So it was such a joy to see you all on that stage.
It really was.
It was a really beautiful night and very well-organized by the teachers.
It was.
Very well done. Good job.
And this was part of your CAS project, right? The Mandarin Honor Society?
Right, the Mandarin, yeah.
Yeah, the Mandarin Honor Society bringing that to the school was my CAS project.
Which is creativity, action, service?
Creativity, activity, service, I believe. It could be action.
I never can remember the three things.
There we go.
So it's a project that it has to go, it works over so many weeks, so many months?
So it has to be, I believe, at least over the course of a month, like planning and everything. But I've been working on bringing the honor society to our school for around a little over a year now. And yeah, it's just, it has to encompass either creativity, action, or service, and yeah.
You get all three. Congratulations, and thank you so much for bringing it.
You're not kidding. And this is the first year that it was actually as an honor society.
Yeah, impressive.
So Mandarin, French, and Spanish.
Right.
And Spanion.
That was good. I wish I understood it, but, I mean, it's nice they speak, they do it in both languages, but, but...
I'll sit next to you next time.
Reminds me of how, how important having another language can be. Okay, nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays.